Good afternoon. I'd like to call the order to the order of the January 2018 City of Columbia Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to welcome all Planning Commission members, staff, and guests. At this time, I would like to ask everyone turn their cell phones and PDAs to the silent or vibrate mode. The Administrator will now proceed with the roll call.
Mr. Tupper?
Here.
Ms. Hartz?
Here.
Mr. Stegemeier?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Waits?
Here.
Ms. James?
Here.
And, up, that's it?
That's it. Thank you.
Yep.
This time, I'd like to give you a brief review of the meeting format. Applicants with requests before the Planning Commission are allotted a presentation time of ten minutes. This time should include, but is not limited to, an overview of the project, case history, and any pertinent meetings held regarding the request. This time also includes all persons presenting information on behalf of the applicant such as attorneys, engineers, and architects. This time limit does not include any questions asked by the Planning Commission or staff regarding these requests. Members of the general public are given the opportunity to address their concerns in intervals of two minutes. The Administrator has a timer and will make presenters aware of when their time has expired. The Planning Commission reserves the right to amend these procedures on a case-by-case basis. The Planning Commission uses the Consent Agenda to approve non-controversial or routine matters by a single motion and vote. Examples of such items include approval of site plans, annexations, and street names. If a member of the Planning Commission or the general public would like to discuss an item on the Consent Agenda, that item is removed from the Consent Agenda and considered during the meeting. The Planning Commission then approves the remaining Consent Agenda items. The Administrator will now read the Consent Agenda.
Your Consent Agenda this evening consists of the approval of the December 4, 2017 minutes, as well as an Annexation Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment and Zoning Map Amendment for 2050 Wood Creek Farms Road, which is the annexation and assignment of a land use classification and zoning.
Do any Commission members or guests today wish to have items on the Consent Agenda removed and placed on the regular agenda? If not, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Consent Agenda is approved. We will now proceed with the regular agenda. And prior to starting, I'd like to remind everyone who comes to the podium to please state your name clearly before speaking.
Just so everybody probably already heard that we have some technical difficulties with the speakers in the room, so hopefully it won't get too loud for us. Your first item on your regular agenda this evening is an Annexation and Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment and Zoning Map Amendment for 1215 Mason Road, 1307 Mason Road, Denton Drive, 4.73 acres on Denton Drive, 3.88 acres on Denton Drive, and 17.7 acres on the north-south Mason Road, as well as 1028 Wooddale Circle. This item was on your agenda last month. The applicant went back and talked to more people in the surrounding neighborhoods. They've had a number of meetings throughout December, and the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Yeah, I'd like the applicant to come forward, please.
First of all, Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I'm Anthony Lawrence with Brownstone. I'm an architect responsible for the master planning exercises associated with this project that we're calling Azerist on Heritage Creek. We came before you in December at the last meeting, and we asked for a deferral intentionally because after having seven community meetings, we felt that we had not addressed all of the community's concerns that they had brought forth to our team up until that time. And we met on December 17th, had about 60 people attend. We went over the master plan specifics of the neighborhood because there were individuals who had not met, who were not able to attend some of the previous meetings. So we went over the plan, explained the objectives. We also went so far as to address some of the more pressing concerns of the community was concerns about taxes, and the big elephant in the room is annexation. And in preparation for that, we provided state law information to explain to the individuals what can and cannot be done in terms of taxes or raising taxes, to give them an idea financially, if there was any impact to individual homeowners. And then in regards to annexation, that issue that our team has come to realize is that it's something that's beyond our control. There's a past history between the city and the county associated with annexation that we are not equipped to, nor should we feel necessary to try to address that. We have a private property owner that I'm representing. He has purchased the land, and under the law, he can annex it into the City of Columbia because of the utilities that are available, and also to help him in saving dollars that can be put into making sure the project is going to be as beneficial to the community as possible. We did not receive any rebuttals to the design of the master plan, the number of units. We addressed the issues about access. We've addressed issues about traffic. There is a, our property owner is considering if we need to input a or install a traffic light at the corner of Mason and Two Notch. That's something that, and he is considering, even though the traffic report that is being reviewed by the city, and it has been reviewed by DOT, says that you don't need a traffic signal, but we recognizing that. You've got to be a good neighbor at the end of the day. And so we recognize that some people are not comfortable with this because it is something new in the community, but we are, and we feel that after meeting all of last year, have addressed their concerns as much as we can. And you will hear some individuals after me, if you allow them to, to talk about why they think the project is beneficial. And you probably will hear some people that say it's not beneficial, but we come before you tonight to ask for annexation approval.
In your meeting, I've, since the last time everyone was here, I've read over this proposal several times, and one of the things I wasn't clear on, but I am now from the first meeting, is if I'm not mistaken, staff can let me know if I'm right or wrong, the only thing that's being annexed is the land you're developing. And I know that was a main concern of a lot of the people who spoke against it the last time, was the concern of, is my property going to be annexed? And from what I understand, no.
No. 68.99 acres, that's it.
Right. And that's where you plan to develop your?
Project.
Your project.
Only, within the confines of that property, of that boundary, yes, which is what you have in your packages.
Okay.
We are not touching anyone else's property.
Any other questions for the applicant?
It is not changing.
If, and this is for benefit of the property, there's an additional property that we may have to acquire that's not owned by any private citizen. It's owned by a corporation, and that is to allow the development to improve its water and sewer as we, with private funds, will be developing. And we may need some extra space for parking, as well as groundwater detention, but it's not private property. It's corporate property that we may, and we haven't, because we have to get through this process and get through doing the master plan, but that's the only other land that will be required. But it has nothing to do with anyone and any individual private property owner, or resident, I'm sorry. It's corporate, so it's private, so.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant right now? Okay, thank you.
All right, now, thank you all for your time. Thank you.
I'm thinking we probably have a list of people who would like to speak in favor of this project, and people who would like to give their thoughts if they're not in favor. We heard a lot of people the last time, so at this time, anyone who would like to come forward and speak?
I'm Gwendolyn Kennedy, Richland County Council for District Seven, and I'm here on behalf of the residents that are in the surrounding areas that I represent, and one section I do not represent, but they have contacted me also. These people are not in favor of this plan. I have been bombarded with calls, visits, and everything else because they do not think that we need, and quite frankly, I don't see the need for a school and all of these other buildings in that small area. We already have schools in that particular area that are not even overpopulated. They are concerned about the high volume of traffic that is going to present in that area, and I have not had one call from anyone in those areas that I represent that are in favor of this. I think some people are here, it was a lot more here at the other meeting that they didn't get a chance, we didn't get a chance to speak, but I just wanted you to be aware that they are totally against it, from the Meadow Lake subdivision to all the other areas surrounding the area that I represent. I appreciate your time, but there's some concern also, before I go, concern about why we need another school. We have several schools that are not overpopulated already in that area. We have housing facilities enough in that area. It's seemingly everything that's being brought in, and it's a nice plan, don't get me wrong, and I don't think any of the residents, the plan is nice, but not for this particular area. The citizens were not given an opportunity ahead of time to discuss the plan, and when it was brought to my attention, it was brought to my attention because they began to see signs and wanted to know what was going on. So that's where it stands right now, and they are definitely against it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was a school mentioned the last time?
Yes, it's a, on the drawing on your, on your slide, it's item number seven.
Seven.
It's a very small, little, like, private-type school indicated.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Bianca Richardson. I'm a product of this area, and actually currently still live in this area. We all know, if there's no growth, whether it be an organism, whether it be a plant or a carcass, we do know that things die, and when things are dying, you have things that feed on it, correct? And it continues to die, and that's how I feel about the area of 29203, which needs, desperately needs economic development. It's an area that is very much under deserved. I have a nonprofit, and I service the majority of the girls in that area. And in servicing them, there's a number of needs. So a school definitely is a need. Economic development in general, new grocery stores needs to definitely be developed in that area. More importantly, there's a large number of kids who are undeserved, and I'm speaking, I am speaking from a community standpoint, but we all know if the community doesn't grow, if that area doesn't continue to grow, the area will continue, and crime will increase, teen pregnancy, and the area will eventually just die, and it would be crime-ridden. And so for me, from speaking from someone who works heavily in the community, I personally want to see economic development in this area. My grandmother still has her house in North 21 Terrace, which is, would be right next door to this area. My aunt, she actually stays on Denton Drive. So me personally, I went off to college in 2006. I graduated from Howard University, and I came back home, by the way, because my brother was murdered. So me, in speaking, I relate a lot to the kids in that area. And I come back home, and exactly the way that I left, that's exactly how that entire area looks. And so being from Columbia, South Carolina, I in general, just in general, want to see this specific area grow. There are so many great things happening. We have Bull Street. You look at Bull Street, look at Bull Street five years ago, it didn't look like that. Now, you look at the various things that the people are attractions, that they want to go to that area, they want to move into that area, why not 29203? I really want to see this area grow. Now, for me, from speaking from the schools, I grew up in schools in that area. I grew up, I'm a product of that area. I went to A.J. Lewis, Greenview, also went to W.G. Sanders. And you know what, unfortunately? My grandmother took me out of those schools. I was transferred to Dreer and to Han because of the quality of education there. So I'm not sure, and by the way, I didn't even get a chance to even hang out much as a child growing up in that area. So this particular community's project is not only best for the community economically, but it's also better for the children and the quality of life for the people in that area. So this is a project I'm in favor of. I know various, not just community leaders, but citizens that currently live in that area that are in favor of this project from various different economic backgrounds. So on that behalf, I'm speaking for them. So I hope you hear me. Once again, I'm Bianca Richardson. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other guests that would like to come up and speak tonight? There's a timer on your left, and when you see the red light, time's up.
Hello, my name is Barbara Roach, and I'm the President of the Meadow Lake Homeowners Association. I'm here representing my community, the people who look like me. People who have lived in the community for over 50 years or so, folks that retired there who returned from the military, from Vietnam and so forth. These were the first times that we could have brick homes, and we have stayed there. I've lived there 42 years. I know that each community develops, and the lady before said something about dying. I don't plan to go anyplace anytime soon. We want to stay in our homes. We grow our own vegetables. We take care, we eat healthy. We're able to go where we want to go. We have recreation. We have Greenview Park, we have Meadow Lake Park. There's also another facility, a park is in this area too, in this design, and there's one being built off Fair Road, or AAU-type things, where they're going to have multiple use with basketball arenas and so forth. So there are a lot of things there, and the people I talk to, we don't plan to leave our home until it's either medically determined or so forth, so we don't need assisted living. So one question is, where are the people coming from who are going to move to this community? Where are the young people going to come from? How are we going to entice them to come there when right now, we're having issues with the traffic? Once they open up that bridge out on 21, those 18-wheelers are going to be zooming like crazy. Today, when we were coming, we saw 18-wheelers going around and turning around. We've had to block off Meadow Lake because they turn, come in there and turn around. So once they open that, it's going to be easier for them to come from 77 through 21 to this area. And then you're going to have more cars coming in and out in the morning. We have a problem, when we were younger, you know, we had a problem with the traffic and so forth. So there are a lot of things to be concerned about this, and we're not saying that there shouldn't be any development, but what we are interested in is what has been done to figure out that we need all of this? And if you don't need it, and you allow it to come in, then how much will be done? And then will it stop, and then we'll just have another eyesore on that side of the community, on that side of town? So I ask you to really look at it seriously and think, and know that we're concerned about the quality of our life, and we don't want to be forgotten in this process. We didn't ask for it, and it keeps that, it's always that, we need it, but we didn't ask for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Crystal Spain. I'm a resident of North 21 Terrace. I grew up in that area, and I'm now a current resident. My father, as she mentioned, the Vietnam vets, my father, I rest his soul, was a Vietnam vet, and I want to speak in favor of the project. I currently live there. I'm not a homeowner, I stay with my mom, but I have, I am reinvested in this side of town. This side of town is dying. If we do not breathe new life into this side of town, it's going to die. So the project is, it has a lot of great things in there that are beneficial to the community. I know that some people don't want a new school or don't want assisted living, but there's nothing there now, nothing. Yes, we have easy access, we can go and come as we please, but we're going to the other side of town. We're going to Irma, we're going to Harpers, and we're going to Sand Hills because there's nothing in our area. And I believe that if we do breathe, create this project, people will come, new homeowners will come, because people now are selling their houses, and they're renting them out. And no offense to people who rent homes, but they don't have the same pride and ownership as people who own their homes. And I currently live next door to someone who does not care about the property, and it's driving my mother's property value down, and all the people who've been there for 50 years. So I think it's very important that we support this project so that we can all keep our community alive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Israel Cannon, and I'm a resident of 1100 Wooddale Circle, and we spoke on the last time we were here, and I'm still yet concerned about that those streets out there in North 21 Terrace, 1100 Wooddale Circle, and which I did talk with the developer, and he did say that those roads would not be used. So I was just wanting to know that, just in a statement, that would those roads be blocked off, or what we're going to do with those roads? And yet, this Saturday, as I think it was Saturday, we had the big 18-wheeler burn up on Interstate 20 there, and traffic was flowing everywhere. I was trying to get in from work, coming in from work, and I normally comes down 20, but this time I had to come down, they're by the Flying J there, that road, I had to come through there, and the traffic was just so terrible. Anytime we have an accident on 20, 26, 77, all that traffic interferes with our area over there, Mason Road, and locked the cars, that's where they get off to try to come through to get through. So that road is really terrible during that particular time. But I am really concerned about the streets by my house, where they're, and if they use those roads, then we don't have just very little bit of space between the two houses where the road go through. So would there be a fence put up there to protect our children when they're out there playing? I have little grandchildren all over playing out there. So I'm just wondering, you know, what would be done to protect us, protect our property? I've been out there 45 years, and I'm very satisfied with the area. I don't think, I don't see where we need anything out there. I'm satisfied with the area.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Quarles. I'm Assistant Vice President to the Fairwall Community, and we are happy, excited, and delighted for this new upcoming development project to come in our area. It is a long time coming. It is time for growth, it is time for change, and we are very pleased and praying and hoping that it will soon begin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm James Starnes. I am President of the North 21 Terrace Neighborhood Association, where the project will be. I wanted to, first of all, mention that the developer has been very, very open to us and giving us opportunity to ask questions. My purpose today is simply to communicate what my neighbors have mandated that I share with you, and that there, the objections that we are hearing are based on a couple of things, and that is a disbelief that the traffic situation can be resolved, and doubt about the success of those businesses and things that are proposed for that area. We have people on both sides of the fence, but my purpose is just to do what they've told me to do, and the majority of them have expressed their objection, again, based on those things that I've mentioned, and a belief that the city is not in a position to guarantee that the project will be as successful as the city expects it to be. Again, the developer has been extremely open and willing to answer questions and work with us, but the majority of the folk have asked me to communicate that to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sabrina Edwards from, I'm representing the North Columbia Business Association, and we are here in support of the development project. And I'm not going to be long in front of you. I just want to say, change is a really hard thing for many people, and if it wasn't for downtown and the changes that happened on Main Street, the changes that's happening on Bull Street, we want to keep the young people here, and we also want the older people to reside and live on their own too. So we're very much in favor of the project. We think that developers will figure out a balance to work with the community, but change is always hard. We just want to let you know that NCBA, the Business Association, supports the development project on North Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Deirdre Niblock, and I am here on the positive side. I'm looking forward to working with Mr. Lawrence and this project. I currently own a private facility in Columbia, and we're looking forward to expanding. And to just give some clarification, this is not just a school, this is an early childhood learning facility. We'll be serving students from one years old to approximately six years old, and there is a need for this. I have a waiting list of like 150 kids, and a lot of them come from these areas. So we know that there's something there, and there's something that we can do. We'd like to be a part of it in growing this area, and again, bringing some positive things to this. And like so many others who have spoken, I grew up in Highland Park. I'm from this area. My aunt lived in Meadow Lakes, my godmother lives in North 21 Terrace. I have run these, up and down these roads all my life. So for us to be able to do something that's going to allow some growth and development in this area where there is nothing because things are constantly closing and not coming back up, I think we have an opportunity here, and we would surely like to be a part of it, and hoping that we can all explore that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come forward?
Good afternoon. My name is Tina Herbert, and I am here in my personal capacity. I am a resident, I don't know if y'all still do that, 1004 Corolla Avenue. Just as full disclosure, I used to work for the City of Columbia in Economic Development. Krista's on my team, and I work with Ryan and John, and they're great folks, and I do do some consulting for the city, but not in regard to this particular project. I am here because this is my neighborhood. I lived in Meadow Lakes twice, I lived in Greenview twice, I lived on Colonial Drive twice, and I have a vested interest in the development of this community. Right now, I live right up the street by Columbia College, but I'm in an interesting season in my life because I moved, and I chose to come back to Columbia. And I chose to come back because I knew that there were a lot of things that needed to be done in Columbia, and I really felt that I could help out with that. And so now we have a great opportunity in our area. The coolest thing for me is I now have a daughter who is in law school and who is trying to determine where she's going to stay. And at this point, my daughter does not feel that Columbia is someplace that is competitive for her to go. She thinks that she has to go to Charlotte, she thinks she has to go to DC, she thinks she has to go to Atlanta, but I want her to understand that she can stay here in Columbia because Columbia has some wonderful things going on. Now, what I have also realized with her is I live in an old house. Well, she wants to stay downtown, but she's not going to buy a house that was made in 1926 like our house, because she thinks it's going to fall apart, because I'm always working on projects. So my daughter, who is 23, who will be looking for a job and will be able to either rent or own, because a lot of our millennials are renting, and I know someone said there's no need for rental, and I don't know where y'all are from, because Columbia has an excessive shortage of rental property, but there are young professionals such as my daughter who would be a prime example for this. I also talk to, I'm a mentor at Columbia College for a young lady named Kim Dong, and Kim says that there's nothing for the young ladies to do at Columbia College, so they have to go to the Vista if they want to do something at night. There are no eating places, they just have the little calf, and so they want some things to do. We talked about senior housing, and again, I don't know where people have been. My grandmother lived in for her to go. She thinks that she has to go to Charlotte, she thinks she has to go to DC, she thinks she has to go to Atlanta, but I want her to understand that she can stay here in Columbia because Columbia has some wonderful things going on. Now, what I have also realized with her is I live in an old house. Well, she wants to stay downtown, but she's not going to buy a house that was made in 1926 like our house because she thinks it's going to fall apart because I'm always working on projects. So my daughter, who is 23, who will be looking for a job and will be able to either rent or own, because a lot of our millennials are renting, and I know someone said there's no need for rental, and I don't know where y'all are from, because Columbia has an excessive shortage of rental property, but there are young professionals such as my daughter who would be a prime example for this. I also talk to, I'm a mentor at Columbia College for a young lady named Kim Dong, and Kim says that there's nothing for the young ladies to do at Columbia College, so they have to go to the Vista if they want to do something at night. There are no eating places, they just have the little calf, and so they want some things to do. We talked about senior housing, and again, I don't know where people have been, my grandmother lived in Meadow Lake, and she lived in Windermere, but she was on the waiting list for 10 years to get into Enzor Forest, and I'm sure y'all are familiar with Enzor Forest, the city owns it, and she's been there for 18 years. And so people are on waiting lists for senior care and for childcare, and I just wanted to say that I'm in support of it, and if, and I help, I will help in any way that I can to help the project be successful.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward?
Hi, I'm Lauren Taylor. We own a real estate company here, came mainly from an investment and development background. We're definitely in support of the project for a couple of different reasons. We've been a part of development projects in other areas that are very similar and mirror, mirror North Maine in a lot of different ways, and we do understand each time we go through one of these projects, we're going to encounter people who don't want change to come into their community, and that's because they're scared of tax rates going up, they're scared of traffic. But the most important thing is to look at test examples of what development projects do for economic growth in those areas, and we know that by bringing in businesses and jobs that don't exist there now, that we can help facilitate growth in that area pretty significantly. So we definitely wanted to, kind of just from a more business-like standpoint, give our support of the project as well.
Thank you. Do we have any other guests who would like to come forward? Any more questions for staff? I'd like to call for a motion then, please.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve annexation, assigned land use classifications of urban edge, community activity center, urban edge, mixed residential and urban edge, residential, small lot, and assigned zoning of planned unit development, large-scale, with staff conditions incorporated into the PUD document at the time of annexation.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? I think that's it for us.
Need a motion to adjourn.
I need a motion, yeah, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.